Coming out and seeing what goes on in the county, taking part in our meeting. Couple of notes is that we will hear each case and there will be a public hearing where anyone is allowed to speak. Any opposing side, you can get together and kind of caucus and you have up to 10 minutes to talk or if you've signed up, you have three minutes. Each individual, person has three minutes to talk. And then the applicant has, or those in favor of would have 10 minutes to talk too. Or if each individual signs up, has three minutes to talk. The staff will report and then those that have signed up will be allowed to speak. And then, like I said, that's when each side will have 10 minutes. If y'all want to congregate and speak, have one person speak or a couple of people speak, you'll have up to 10 minutes. So just kind of FYI. So we've got a little bit larger than average crowd than we normally do at the planning meetings. Did I leave out Ian Hainrich?
So essentially, as a public hearing, anybody can speak. Please sign up in general for being here and, you know, please make sure, especially if you're going to speak, you know, absolutely that you have signed up. And everybody has the right to be heard. So the planning commission can choose, if they want to, to extend time. But the minimum is 10 minutes per side.
Let's throw in in favor of and against. Okay. So without any further ado, if you would, please stand for our invocation of holy deities. Our gracious heaven father, I want to thank you, Lord, for the many blessings of life. Lord, too numerous to mention, Lord. Thank you for allowing us to gather here and please be with this commission board to make the best recommended decisions for the citizens of Pickens County. Be with our soldiers fighting for our freedoms on foreign soil. Be with our nation's leaders, Lord, in all these many favors and things we ask of our sons and daughters. Amen.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item two is reading and approval of last month's meeting minutes. Make a move without permission. Second. Have a move in second to adopt last month's minutes. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries. The third item is old business. We have none. The fourth item is new business. We have a read zone or a special use events request. And I'd like to announce we're going to open up a public hearing for this issue. I'd like to ask Richard what the county's recommendation is, please.
Thank you, Mr. Kegel. I'll note for both cases that both cases have been legally advertised. We do have a copy on hand of public information policies and procedures for how the planning commission operates. So, you know, now or after the meeting, I'll be glad to get anybody that that wants it. And I will ask that for both cases, the staff report and the entire cas- case file be made a part of the record. For this first case, I'm going to hand y'all out something that's been received by our office just this week. For this special event case, the applicant and the adjacent property owner, Angels on Horseback, have come to a tentative written agreement for a second drive to be opened when events are held. That is not a legal agreement at this point. The legal details are being hashed out, but they do have a written agreement while the process is ongoing. Brent Hancock and Deborah Meele submitted an application for a conditional use application on 15 acres at 673 Long Swamp Church Road. The intent would be to host small special events such as bridal or baby showers, dinner parties, catered dinner or lunch parties themed around holidays, fundraising events, and outdoor weddings. This property was formerly the site of Old Scratch Farm, which included some agribusiness and agritourism. The applicants have stated that all events will end by 10:00 PM or earlier. The applicants are the owner occupiers of the main house as they closed on the property and moved in this year. This property accesses Long Swamp Church Road from the gravel section. The property has a long driveway and, as was mentioned, there has historically been a second driveway connecting the property to Penley Circle. The applicants have now reached an agreement with Angels on Horseback and they are working out the legal details. In addition to the main house built in about 1989, the structures on the property include a barns, shed, and utility building. In reviewing the criteria to consider for conditional uses, a couple of things that stood out, hours and manner of operation. Nearby uses include Angels on Horseback, Long Swamp Baptist Church, contractor's office, and single-family houses. Limiting the hours so that all operations end at or before 10 o'clock may be appropriate. This proposed use is consistent with the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan. Staff recognizes that one of the goals of the comprehensive plan is for community leaders to promote agritourism, ecotourism, heritage tourism, and other innovative business opportunities. For this application, staff recommends that a condition be placed on the property that all operations must end at or before 10 o'clock.
Is anyone here from, or Mr. Hancock here?
Yes, sir.
Anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, I just introduced myself.
Would please, y'all say your name and address.
Yeah, my name's Brent Hancock. I'm owner-operator of Ben Tree Lodge and Vineyard Bed and Breakfast at 673 Long Swamp Church Road. We, Debbie and I moved out, we kind of had a vision of having a bed and breakfast. And so we, we got up and found this property, which is just perfect. It is beautiful and we just fell in love with it. And so we're this close now to getting approval from the health department for opening up next month as a B and B. We've got the fire marshal coming out tomorrow for our fire alarm. So we're really excited about how everything's coming together. But we, part of our vision is having a bed and breakfast. We live on site. My parents are downsizing and relocating from Kansas City. They'll be here in about a week, so they'll be living on site with us too. So it's kind of a, it was going to be a family kind of affair, if you will. But we want to, we enjoy hosting and we want to be able to give back to the community. And part of, part of what we want to do is be able to have venue for weddings. So if someone wants to stay on our property in our bed and breakfast, that we have the opportunity to provide weddings for them. We really envision no more than 75 to maybe 100 people every evening around time. We're still both working full-time, so the bed and breakfast is only going to be open on weekends to start. So we're just kind of slowly kind of getting into this, but the main thing we really want to be able to do is just have an, have an opportunity for people to come and use our property, come to Pickens County, hopefully spend money in the county. But then we also want to be able to give back to the community. And we've talked with Angels on Horseback as them to use our property for any meetings they might have or fundraisers. And so we want, that's kind of where we're at. We want to really be a fabric of the community and be a part of it. And that's part of what we got up here. I grew up in a small town in Missouri and lived around a lot of the big cities and coming up here is just like a slice of heaven. And it just, people are so nice and friendly. Our neighbor Wayne Anderson has just been a super great guy. And we just, we love it up here. So we want to be able to share our property with those around. We don't anticipate having lots of events because of our size and we will limit ourselves to what we have. And we will definitely be done no later than 10 o'clock because I don't want to stay up all hours and even have to clean up, but I know my parents don't either. So we're really excited about this and we appreciate your guys' consideration. Thank you.
So any questions?
What improvements do you envision making to the property?
Well, our kind of our long-term plan, if you will, is we got a, we had a landscape guy come out.
Landscape architect designed outdoor living space for us.
You talked to him, said anything?
We had a landscape architect come right after we closed on the property and designed outdoor living space for us, which would include an outdoor fireplace, brick paver, patio area, and some trellis work and just a beautiful outdoor, just really highlighting the mountain view that we have at this property. As a small venue to have very small intimate weddings, we don't have a huge amount of space, so we'd not be a large wedding venue. Something very intimate and small is something that we would be able to accommodate and provide that for the community. So part of the improvements would be this outdoor patio area, trellis work, and outdoor fireplace to make it an outdoor entertaining. We love the outdoors. And then the back field pasture that used to be part of the farm would be an area that we would use for parking. So those are improvements that we would be making.
And if you, if you think about, if you've been to Chateau Mitree, Maitree, and if you've been out to kind of patio area off to the side, that's really kind of the size of area we're talking about having. So that's, if you've been there and kind of, that's kind of the size of what we envision our, that's the size of our back area, yeah.
So that's the outside improvement. What about structure?
The interior structure is, didn't really need much improvement. It was laid out perfectly.
But you're going to live in there.
Yes, we are.
Yes. There's an owner's suite that we will live in. And eventually, one of my parents, we'll be plotting off an acre and a half for their home. And then we'll move into the owner's quarters once they're out and then we'll rent out four rooms eventually. But we'll have the, we have the ability to, I have the ability to close off the kitchen and have a large, it's a large open area in the main, the big fireplace and...
So what square footage is allocated towards the special event things that you're going to have, if you need to have inside?
Inside, that's probably...
I would estimate 1,000 square feet.
Yeah, it's probably, probably a thousand square feet.
The main looking room.
There's not a lot of room.
Right. That's what I mean, we're talking small events.
100 people, 1,000 square feet, it's going to be pretty big if it comes with a gully washer.
Better be good friends.
They gotta be great friends.
This is, well, excuse me, sorry. This is well water. Have you had the well tested? Do you think it's going to be adequate for, does it need gas?
Actually haven't had the well tested. Haven't had any issues with it and there's been plenty of pressure when we've had four rooms of people using the water.
How far away from the church are y'all?
As the crow flies, straight line about 1,000 feet from our front door to the edge of church.
So with the agreement, did you access off of Penley Road? Is that right?
Yes.
Which, which road's going to be the primary entrance? Would it be off of Penley or would it be off the other road?
Primary entrance would be off of the gravel section of Long Swamp. And then it would be a one-way coming in and then out to Penley Circle.
One-way on your drive?
Correct.
How, how would you control that with your guests?
That's a good question. We'll have signage that says entrance only or, you know, do not enter sign or you can come out. And as an event would end, that we would have, make sure that we would have some direct people.
You won't, only entrance, you could get there off of Highway 50, well, it's not really Highway, off of, well, down off of...
Long Swamp.
It's not the highway. Cog Road.
Yes, that's the main entrance.
Yeah, that's the main.
Direct people off of Long Swamp.
Yeah, but you could turn on Bent Tree Drive off Cog Road. If you miss that, you can go down Long Swamp and get that beat away.
Correct.
Correct.
How are you going to, how are you going to make sure that happens?
That which happens?
That they access.
Did the guests have to choose the right access on the Cog Road?
We would definitely like to talk about putting signage so that people know to use the entrance, the paved part of Long Swamp Church Road. That's my preference, that people would go down Cog Road to the stop sign at Long Swamp Church and make the left and take the paved access. It's a prettier drive coming in that way.
Sure.
And they only have a very small area of gravel. So that would be the one-way drive into the property. And then as an event would end, they would leave out the other driveway, Penley Circle, and we would make sure there would be a sign there to point them to the right so that they're going back to the paved part of Long Swamp Church Road.
Yeah.
Does that answer your question?
It does, but, you know, have you said anything to the property owners there on Cog Road?
We have not, we have not yet because that's part of making sure all of this is, if this is approved, then we know to start to approach people. I guess I'm unaware of the order of sequence of events. Should we be placing those signs before we're approved?
No, but I would certainly group that with the property owners in that area because that's one of my biggest concerns is traffic in that area and especially emergency services. Having witnessed ambulance movement in that area, it is not very easy, especially at night. There's not any street lights, there's very little light in that area, it can be extremely dark. And one of the things we need to do is public services look out for public safety. A rainy night with 100 people with limited facilities and an accident happens on that roadway with limited traffic coming in and out would be very difficult and a burden on you guys that I think you should seriously consider.
Richard, you asked, number one, that you asked or requested information from the public safety staff, have they given you any feedback yet?
I did ask for input from, from the sheriff's department, from fire, from EMA, from other staff members, and I did not get any comments, concerns, objections, anything like that.
And it was understood that they should give you that information before tonight?
Yes, sir.
That was going to be my next question as well.
Just trying to be helpful. You raised a good question.
Well, there's no good way for emergency, but either Bent Tree Drive, you got dirt road, or Long Swamp Church Road is paved, but it's not much better really, a one-lane road and it's fairly curvy. So, I mean, that is a concern, an obvious concern. So that, but no one from the sheriff or EMA got back with you on that?
No, and, you know, there is no precedent setting case. We have had this come up before on other properties with other conditional use, you know, special event facilities. I have not gotten comments or feedback in those cases. In this case, I did not either.
What responsibility is it to see what's still before we have the data here? Is that something that you're going to check on?
But I think, you know, if there was something significant, because not only through email but, you know, face-to-face, I also reached out to these guys and said, you know, please let me know if there's something of significant concern, why it would be unusual in terms of topography or floodplain or surface material paved versus gravel or, you know, only one-way from several roads getting to a property. Again, you know, I don't want to get too much into the weeds about one particular case versus another. You know, there were potentially more concerns on the Ben Jones property on North Pickens at the Gilmer Line where you had coming off 515, you came onto a gravel road with, you know, probably 10% grade or something like that. You know, especially just before you turned from that narrow gravel public road onto his long, narrow private drive where there was a lot of floodplain on his property and it was, you know, more challenging for sure than this property. Does that take away from this property in particular, you know, possible concerns? No, it doesn't take away from it. There weren't comments or concerns then from public safety folks and for this case, I didn't get any.
Any other questions?
If you put 50 or 60 cars on that road, have you got parking for them?
Yes, we do. We've got about...
Good parking where they can get out if it's raining or you're going to have to have wrecker service out there?
Rain might be a little different, but that rain could be a challenge because it's a pasture. It's really be parking.
That's just about a one-lane road and, you know, if you have 100 people, you're going to have 50 to 60 cars at least.
The road that y'all are trying to gain access to or work out and deal with Angels on Horseback, is it in pretty decent shape?
Yeah, it's kind of, it's kind of, it's a good shape, yeah.
Any other question?
So everything's going to be handicap accessible? You don't have restrooms built or just the ones in the building?
The ones in the building.
And they're adequate for 100 people?
Maximum 100 people. I mean, I, we would not plan to host events that would be, I'm thinking smaller.
I was making it from your notes. You said no more than 100 guests, so I assumed that would be a maximum.
Yes, and, you know, thinking if we did have a wedding that was going to be 100 people, I would look at the possibility of adding porta-potties if we had to something like that. If we didn't, I don't know, but one bathroom downstairs is going to be adequate for 100 people. But that would be placed on people that would be renting the space to bring in maybe a facility as part of the event.
We've had a couple of these come through and part of, part of why Richard brings it up about the one I'm going to update was my concern over that one as well. I asked the public safety questions, eggs. And I don't know what, what we can do to improve the process or what needs to happen to get something in feedback. You mentioned you're having the fire marshal inspection tomorrow. I wish you would have said yesterday or last week, you know? And get a better feel for them.
We've already been working. We had Curtis out and he saw the place and told us what we needed to do. He approved the plans and they've been installed. And I've been trying to get him in for the past two weeks.
Was that really a problem?
Yeah, it's just final section.
Final section because we've already done the checklist, everything that he suggested.
Sure, but is that, did I hear you correctly? That's what bed and breakfast's parked?
Correct, yes.
Which is different than hosting an event. So part of my thinking process and reading the application and listening to you speak is very much, you know, a long-term plan, a property, any property owner would have that wants to do something there. But I just don't know if this is kind of a cart before the horse kind of thing. Get that established, see what traffic is like for people coming in that. Because that has a transplane as well. I'm, obviously I can't remember Cog Road and I live off of it. But they, you know, just getting, getting to know the county and the area and the access in different directions, you know, hit Google Maps on a place you've been 15 times, it'll take you a whole different direction in Pickens County, you know, surprising to me. And that's one thing I did just for, for your information, I hit it from Google Maps from here and it's taken me right up Bent Tree Drive and, you know, down the gravel road. So if you're looking for someone to have that scenic route coming in the other direction, it's going to be hard for you to control 75 guests and which way they go and how they go in and how they go out, which, which way they turn and this type of thing. So it's just the, the traffic increase and the potential for people from out of county, what's their experience going to be if they come to Pickens County and something unexpected happens? You've got a great piece of property, a great view, it's beautiful there, I know it is. I've been out that way years ago, but, you know, it's the people that don't know the area, that don't know what it's like, that come into town for one event and something unexpected happens, we have to consider that as well. And I just don't know that we're at that point to really be prepared for that.
You don't have any of your permits yet? Fire marshal have you checked or nothing else?
Yeah, Mr. Hensley, I appreciate your time. If it's okay, I'll be glad to sort of clarify about that. So with any of these cases, whether it's rezoning or conditional use, we've got to, as staff, focus on, on zoning related issues first. Those have to come first and then whatever happens or doesn't happen, then all the code compliance, life safety code compliance, licensing, permitting, things like that, those all come next. And just because something, you know, is approved or not approved, doesn't necessarily mean then, you know, they can go straight to go. For example, Barnet Dunn Manor from a couple of years ago went through planning commission and the elected officials and was approved with condition that all activities ended at 10 o'clock or before. That didn't stop the process. There was still a significant amount of time working on code compliance issues, life safety compliance issues. They are fully compliant and they are fully permitted and licensed, but there was a lot of work involved. It was more than just getting that recommendation from the planning commission and approval from board of commissioners. And so, you know, I don't want y'all to think, well, you know, because something may or may not be fully inspected yet, that, you know, what we're looking at tonight, of course, is zoning. And in particular, the standards, the criteria to consider for conditional uses. Now, some of these things are somewhat related, like traffic and hours of operation, and they will be a part of licensing and permitting. But, you know, obviously, you know, you, you may not want to put, for example, a condition that, well, everything be code compliant because it would be an unnecessary condition because everything will have to be code compliant before they can operate.
Any other questions or comments? Not for this one. This is for item number... I'm assuming this is for Sam Wheeler, your item number two, the next one? The one you want to speak about?
Yeah.
You just said Mark Witcher.
I did.
So we have nobody speaking on this one?
Let me just make sure, if anybody, everybody needs to sign in and if you want to speak, please, you know, sign. Because again, I, you know, I want to make sure everybody has the opportunity to be heard.
I didn't know where we were supposed to sign.
Okay. Sure, yeah, I'll be glad to.
I signed up there, but I didn't know.
Okay. So this is the one... This is for buildup.
Okay.
Mostly for buildup.
Okay.
Sign the...
Okay.
I was just saying, like to sign for anybody that wants to speak or just make sure.
I was also going to buy a sign down here.
I just wanted to know your, um-
I didn't do the church part.
None for this.
Any other questions?
Anyone for the next one?
None for this.
Okay, we do have, um-
I'm not sure if it's on this one.
Richard, I think he's got one more to sign.
Oh, 14.
Okay. Anything? Okay. Is anybody else want to speak?
Is that for the next one, Richard?
So we have two people that would like to speak. Ms. Lisa Pasilla, you're the first one. Will you please state your address, please?
Hi, my name is Lisa Pasilla, and I live in 76 Edgewood Lane in Bentree. I am, I have been here two years, and I love this place. I mean, there are no nicer people than there are in Pickens County, excepting Kathmandu in Nepal. It's true. I am from Finland, and I live all over the world. I'm a meditation instructor, and I also teach a yoga type, all the people's ex, oh, the people's exercise called Tai Chi. So I give classes in Bentree weekly, and, uh, some very happy people. And I have been meditation instructor, and I have held retreats all over the world, in Australia, in the United States, in Florida, in, uh, St. Paul, Minnesota, Spain, and Finland, of course, India, Nepal, a lot of places. When I saw this, you left out that there could be meditation retreats. And I have been actually looking forward to having some place here, and I've been asking people around, where can I give my meditation retreats? There's nothing in Bentree, because it requires that people from outside come and spend the nights there, or that order comes and, you know, attends the retreat and then goes back to her house. We usually don't have more than 15 people. I can imagine 100 people. I mean, you're very positive, but I don't think we'll have a lot of 100 people gatherings over there. Not like the churches here have, like, a casino people. Very orderly, they move in and out. I would love to see this. I'm for this, because I don't want to insult anybody, but Pickens County is, seems to be a little bit more backward, like Elyje, you know, it's Kioma, it's Canton. It's, I would like to see Jasper flourish. And I would like to see this, I'm for this venue to start, because I'm one of them that I would like to. When my family comes, I only have two spare bedrooms. When they come from Finland, I have family in Finland, California, they come over here, where am I gonna put them? In the Woodbridge Inn, that's expensive, sometimes it's a little bit dirty, and they don't have a place together. So with a place like this, right next door to where I live, I would love that. And of course, at 10 o'clock at night, comes without a question in every community. I mean, you're not gonna, if you want to dance till 2 o'clock in the morning, it's okay in Bentree if you got good insulation. But I would like to, have I gone over three minutes? I'm so sorry.
Yeah, about one minute.
Okay. I think this is a great idea, and I think it would bring a lot of good things, and I'm one of the happy neighbors, that I welcome you, and I'm for it, that's all. I would love to use it, and I think it would bring some enlightenment to this county. Thank you for hearing me.
Ms. Margie Carroll?
Yes.
Will you please state your address?
Yes, my address is 4992 Cove Road. I'm less than a mile away from the proposed venue. I have concerns about this. I can't say that I'm totally against it, but I'm not, I'm certainly not totally for it, because what I'm wondering is, if you decide to leave the property, then does this zoning go its grandfathered in? So then the next people that own this property, their ideas of events might be totally different from what this benign, sweet, soft and warm and buzzy feeling that we're all getting right now, but does that, does that project into the future? That's what I want to know. And I don't know how, what the words "events" actually mean. I mean, it could mean so many things. I mean, if I wanted to go to events, I would've moved to Paces Fair, you know, I would've moved to Buckhead. But an event of a little wedding with your niece and nephew, I mean, that's all fabulous. Who could, who could say that wasn't good? So I'm wondering about how this goes to the future, after you leave the property, the next people that own the property. That's one thing. The other thing is, I'm really, I'm really concerned about the egress and ingress into the property. It has not, it's not fully formed yet, apparently, with angels on horseback. I hear two different things from y'all. One is, oh, we'll have the ingress off of the gravel, and we'll have the, well, if 50 cars go in that way, 50 cars have gotta go out the other way. And, and so, I don't think it's firmed up satisfactorily yet for me to be on the road currently. And I don't know how to get the events, you know, actually firmed up where you can say, oh, yes, only weddings, only, because you want to have some, who would not want meditation to go on there? It's a, you know, that just sounds like a wonderful thing. But a rap concert, I'm not for that. But say you were, you're not for that either, but what if the next people, what if the next people are? Or a hot air balloon event? I mean, you know, how, it's kind of, I'm a children's book author. So, um, so you've got to just give me that, like, wildness. But I'm concerned about it. And I just think it needs to be really, if the traffic part was addressed in a better way, then I could omit that from my argument and just go on to what is an event. But that's where I stand on the problem.
Thank you, sir. Richard, do you want to address that, your question about-
Sure.
The future?
Yes, sir. So rezoning or conditional use cases can be approved or denied, or they can be approved with conditions. And the more conditions, the harder it is to remember for years and years and years as staff change, and as legal implications come in, and as enforcement question, questions come up. So there is absolutely nothing wrong with conditions, as long as they are legally enforceable, and they're easily understood by person one, two, and three. So a condition that all activities end at or before 10 o'clock at night, in a worst-case scenario, an operator of a business, a sheriff's deputy, a county staff person, a variety of people, a neighbor, a variety of people can fairly easily understand what that means. Another possible condition could be that the granting of this request is only for the applicant. And then if the, if the owner-operator changed, then the new potential owner-operator would not be able to get a business license and an alcohol license until they came back before the planning commission and board of commissioners and got approval. That has happened. And then also, the more typical for rezoning or conditional use is, if it gets approved, it gets approved, and it runs with the land, and there is no time expiration or incidentality.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
Yeah, I have a comment. It seems to me we need to, granted, there are open questions that you've raised, which are valid. At the same time, we've got some property owners here who are attempting to do something which, on its face, sounds good. And I think, you know, it's some, we've been talking about, you know, as we're going right now, Richard, we're piecemealing each one of these events as time goes on. We've accepted some, we've turned down others because of various reasons, but at some point we need, there needs to be a template or standard in which we can, I think, all judge these things going forward. Having said that, I'll make a motion to approve the application as submitted, and-
And I'll just clarify, of course, please, if you will, for any motion to recommend one way or the other.
I'll recommend that we accept the application as submitted.
Well, second.
Have a move in second to recommend the application to be approved as is. Any discussion?
Yeah, well, yeah, I had one other question I wanted to ask. What would be the applicant's opinion of having the condition that only applies to you as owner-operator, and it expires upon sale of property? And, but the part of me doesn't want to put you on the spot and ask that immediately. So, and by the same token, I haven't heard enough to make me want not granted, but I certainly have concerns. And my concerns over access and public safety, I think, do apply to zoning, because zoning impacts public services, resource allocation of the county services, and that applies to infrastructure and everything else. If we have a plethora of these on every ground road in the county, then maintenance costs on services will go up, everything goes up, the burden goes up. So I think it does apply. And I didn't know if maybe tailing this might be an option, but the motions are dismissed.
I've got a problem with the traffic over there. Cove Road's a busy road now, and you started quite a few more cars to it. I, I just don't think it would be a very safe place, because like everywhere else in this county, everybody seems to be in a hurry. So I would have to vote against it on that.
Any other discussion?
Would limiting the number of people from 100 to 50 or something like that make a difference in traffic, or if they were to do that, I don't know.
You know, get 100 people, you're gonna have a big seat of cars going in there at one time and trying to get out at one time. Some of them's had a few drinks, like, you have to know what's going to happen.
Do you have, actually have three files?
Not yet. The plan of planting, that's part of the long term.
That's our, our goal within the next-
Long-term plan?
Yeah.
Yes. And, and, you know, the vision that we have to share our property with guests, my vision is, you know, talking with Richard when we started putting all this together and the plan is, you know, if you want to have a baby shower in my living room, I have to have a permit for that. If you wanted to throw a bridal shower for your daughter, I have to have a permit for you to use my space for that. So my mind, in my mind, this is our home. We're certainly not going to have rap concerts in our home, in our yard. We, we want to be able to have small fundraising events, very small intimate weddings. I truly don't see us ever having 100 people in a property.
Or near that, really.
Or near that. And so for you to ask the question, would we be okay, you know, making it conditional that it's just us, and that if we sell the property, the next person has to apply, I'm surprised that's not part of this, this permit, you know, that the next owner-
You never know the reason.
You know what I mean? I'm actually surprised that it would go with the land, that the next people wouldn't have to apply for that same permit. So the heart for us, and, can I just back up and say one more thing? I'm new to Georgia, as a matter of fact, I just moved from Florida last summer, and then pursuing this dream with Brent. It warms my heart that you open your planning commission with a prayer, an invocation. I come from a much larger community, and so that's the fabric of where I want to be and what I want to give back to this community. If the church group wanted to hold a retreat at our property, we need a permit to do that. So that's what we're here seeking. We're here seeking a special use permit for small intimate affairs, and certainly things that would add back to the community and never in any way take away. And I certainly understand your concern about public safety and the entrance and egress, and we are working really hard with the angels on horseback to number one, make sure that everyone enters our property is safe. That's equally important to us, so all of those things will be addressed. Thank you for this opportunity.
Any other question or discussion? All those in favor of rezon recommendation being passed as is, please raise your hand. Motion carries. This public hearing is closed. We have one other rezon request or special use request. I'd like to announce we'll have an open public hearing for this. Richard, what's the county's recommendation, please?
Thank you, Mr. Gable. Sarah Postleway submitted application for conditional use request on about 27 acres on Philadelphia Road, and this is adjacent to the Philadelphia Baptist Church. Intent for the request would be to host small special events such as bridals or baby showers, small dinner parties, catered dinner or lunch parties, themed around holidays, small outdoor weddings, small fundraising events. This is, of course, just west of 515 on that section of Philadelphia Road, and includes a barn built in about 1999, as well as a house built in about 1999. So this is a deep property. You can see the driveway with, right now, for sale sign, right adjacent to the church. And then, once you go onto the paved driveway, you drive back, and from the property line behind the church, it's about 1,000 feet to the barn, and then another 400, 500 feet to the house. The applicant proposes to use the barn for events. The house will primarily be used for residential purposes, and a family member will live in the house, according to the applicant. Applicant has stated that all events would end at or before 10 o'clock. And reviewing the criteria for conditional use, a couple of things that stood out, again, hours and manner of operation. Nearby uses include single-family residences, the Philadelphia church, and agriculture uses. Limiting hours so that all operations end at or before 10 o'clock may be appropriate. The proposed use is consistent with the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan. This area, the comprehensive plan lists this area as suburban infill due to its proximity to 515. In terms of recommendations- This is, of course, just west of 515 on that section of Philadelphia Road and includes a barn built in about 1999 as well as a house built in about 1999. So, this is a deep property. You can see the driveway with "right now for sale" sign right adjacent to the church. And then, once you go on to the paved driveway, you drive back, and from the property line behind the church, it's about 1,000 feet to the barn and then another 400 or 500 feet to the house. The applicant proposes to use the barn for events. The house will primarily be used for residential purposes, and a family member will live in the house, according to the applicant. Applicant has stated that all events would end at or before 10 o'clock. And reviewing the criteria for conditional use, a couple of things that stood out, again, hours and manner of operation. Nearby uses include single-family residences, the Philadelphia Church, and agriculture uses. Limiting hours so that all operations end at or before 10 o'clock may be appropriate. The proposed use is consistent with the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan. This area, the comprehensive plan lists this area as suburban infill due to its proximity to 515. In terms of recommendations for the application, staff recommends that a condition be placed on the property that all operations end at or before 10 o'clock.
Is Ms. Spur or Ms. Postlewa White here?
I am.
Please, is there anyone you'd like to add?
I'm Sarah Postlewa, and I am looking at the property at 1290 Philadelphia. And I've looked and looked and looked for the last three years for a specific place to have a barn. I do look for specific yard roads because I don't want any of the people that are coming to events to go down some windy road or in hilly and everything like this. This was very pretty local and in-town, basically, even though we're in the county, and it has access on both ends of Philadelphia Road for people to come in and on. I started out, basically, this is my first step in the process. I have not bought the property because I just need to make sure that I can go forward with the venue before I actually purchase the property. We will be adding to that property because there's just a pole barn right now, and so I'm looking at building another barn and rest care facilities for men and women in the handicap. And other barn that we're looking at possibly building is just going to be just adjacent to the barn, the pole barn that's already there, and it will be enclosed, and that's where any music will be. And I do hope that, in my layout, I've put in that all music has to stop by 9:45 and all people have to be off to services by 10:15, 10:30, that's already be set. Any questions for me?
Do a question, Ms. Postlewa. How far exactly is your barn where we're holding the events to the driveway or parking lot in Philadelphia Baptist Church?
About, Richard and I went out there and measured it, and I think it was over 1,000 feet away from the church property.
From where the barn is?
Mm-hmm.
Right, so what I did is two different measurements. Because it's a paved driveway, and it's not straight, but it's fairly straight, I drove it from the structure to the approximate property line closest to this property in question, the closest church property line. And driving it, it was a little over 1,000 feet. And also walked it with a measuring wheel, and it was a little over 1,000 feet to the nearest property line of the church, kind of the property line behind the church.
Just that you were going to build a new barn, does that mean you're going to tear this one down?
No, that would be the open barn for actual wedding ceremonies, and then another barn that has air conditioning in it to actually really do reception and...
And it would be even farther back from the church?
Yes.
Are you going to limit the number of people that can attend, or be...
Yes, I'm looking at 3,000 square foot barns, so no more, 150, but max would be 200.
I noticed that at the beginning it was a small outdoor, where it's no more than 100, and then the name says 200, so we'll reduce to 100.
Yeah, and that would be total max. I mean, it's a hard... I have it priced at, you can have up to 100, and then I also have another price in there for 150 and 200 to total max. I hope not to have to have too many 200s because that's a lot of people, but I went around to some of the other areas and saw where they were doing 150 people, and so I was, and saw about their square foot of form, so that's why I numbered it.
I notice a scenario number two, that the location of open space, the provision of screening may be appropriate. Screening, have you planned?
What way?
Screening for plants or something from, I guess, the church and nearby property or something.
If the church is visible, then we can also plant some trees just to kind of screen that off with that sort of trees.
Have you ever done this before?
I've done, back 25 years ago, I had a party business in Parsville, South Carolina for kids. They have not done wedding venues, but I do actually host a lot of different type of parties, and I actually do some catering, but I will not be doing any catering for this. That's not what I want.
So, who would be doing the catering? You'd hire?
I mean, hire, the bride and groom hire, but they're all cater.
Do you provide the facility and they bring pie?
Yes, sir.
And you haven't acquired the property, so...
No, I don't want to buy the property unless I can do this.
So, do you have a firm offer to purchase, provided you get...
I have an intent contract.
What would be your thoughts on adding to the application that supports you as that property owner?
I like that to a point, but then I'm like, well, maybe the other person looking at buying it is interested in the same business, and so, I don't know. I mean, mine's going to go to my, I want mine to be passed down to my girls because they're going to be a part of this business. So, would that apply to them?
Yeah, just, of course, just a clarification. You know, we get this from time to time with businesses where sometimes it's a in-the-loop type group of folks. You know, they're business folks that are under, say, an LLC, and, you know, two or three people are involved, but one of the partners no longer wants to be as directly involved in a gas station or in a restaurant or in whatever it is, and so, from time to time, you know, on a business license or alcohol license, they need to change the name, the business continues, and it, a lot of times, even, you know, keeps the exact same business name, but the people have changed. And then, of course, a lot of times, you know, business was totally closed, and then somebody brand new. So, that's something that, you know, again, it goes back to kind of the issue of conditions on any rezoning case or conditional use application. You know, conditions are fine as long as they are legally enforceable and, you know, can be consistently enforced and easily understood.
Do you have questions? Okay, we have two people that would like to speak. Are there any others that would like to speak that hasn't signed up? If so, we'd like to ask you to sign up, please. Anyone else? Mr. Greg Long?
No, I'm clear, Sam.
Okay.
Her name.
Mr. Sam Williams?
My name's Sam Williams. I live 1776 on the country road in Top Rock, and a member of the church there for over 30 years. And Ms. Marjorie, I think was her name, she hit on some points that just stole part of my discussion.
We want to hear it from you, sir.
What comes after the first owner is part of our concern. Most of the concern that the church had in our last conference meeting, and we decided we needed to come as a committee, you know, and discuss this with the commission and everything, was, of course, destruction, distraction and just noise disruption and things like that that can potentially be generated from activities like this. There is something that came to mind I need to point out, and I think you really need to know this. If you're looking at the fence at the back of the church as the property line, it's not. It's actually over-owned the church property at the corner by about 25 or 30 feet, I believe, it is. We had a survey years ago, and there had any problems with property owners, pasture, always in the pasture there, so graze your cows, we don't care.
I didn't understand that, Sam. Where is the property line relative to the fence?
The real property line by survey is over in the pasture.
Okay.
That's the property line. The fence is in the field out there.
So, how far would that be from where the fence might be, just roughly?
Well, it runs at an angle, but the maximum down at that corner is going to be somewhere around 25 to 30 feet. I've not checked it in a long time, but we had a survey probably 10, 20 years ago or something. But that's something that we would definitely want straightened out with change of ownership. Of course, the barn is visible from the church, and in the event that, you know, this passes, I would certainly hope that we could have some type of a visual barrier because there's going to be noise, there's going to be lights, there's going to be activity go on. The other thing was parking. I've been down in there before, and I know what the land looks like, and I just do not see enough parking. In our parking lot at church, we might have 200 people come to service, and that generates about 100 cars, and that's a full lot, and some parked on the other side of the road and some parked along the road. So, that's another concern we have is, will people, oh, they're not using the church parking lot, can we park there? You know, we don't want to be liable for accidents and things. And another thing is the entrance coming out of that property has been historically used as agricultural slash residential purposes. It's narrow, it comes in at a vertical downgrade. There's not great site distance back to the west. I don't know what county ordinance site distance requirements are, but everybody in this room knows I work for GDOT, and on the state highway system, it's 600 feet right now. It keeps growing. So, I don't know, I don't think you've got 600 feet to the west, but you may not be required for that, and it's already a driveway. That's, I'm talking about if you had to add a driveway, that's what we would require. But we also make changes when use of the driveway changes. And this is going to start talking about commercial use. We meet one Sunday a month, Saturday night, 4:01, and Sunday each month, but in one month, we meet the whole week, day and night services. Then there's the occasional funeral that's always never scheduled, never telling what time, what day of the week, what time of the day that the funerals are. You start having 50, 60, 100 cars coming out of that little old driveway, and then you've got a funeral going on, and that procession trying to come in and out, and people trying to go in and out and leave the church. Those are concerns that we think of, and that's the reason we wanted to come and express that to the board, because, you know, it's not everybody that goes to church there and understands the parking situation and what goes on. And quite frankly, Mr. Hensley made a very good point. If you think they drive fast on Cold Road, try Philadelphia Road, they fly through there. And there's been a lot of times I've nearly been hit myself. I mean, you have to stop and look and really pay attention before you pull out of that wide church parking lot or you'll get run over.
They fly on Lumber Company Road, too, don't they?
That they do. And I feel like the primary direction the traffic will egress from there will be back in front of the church to the signalized intersection out at Philadelphia and 515 rather than down to the unsignaled intersection, which doesn't have the greatest site distance either on Stairway 53. So, those are just some concerns. You know, my life has worked in the line of business of weddings and things for several years with flowers, so we kind of know what goes on with these events, whether they're small or private or whatever. Sometimes they can become tear down. Some do, some don't, you know. We just prefer not to have that going on around our church that has been held there for over 160 years. We're just trying to keep going with what's been handed down generation after generation, trying to keep a peaceful atmosphere, not trying to knock anybody out of business or anything like that, but we just don't feel like the two mesh very well at this particular location, so I think I've used my three minutes.
Question, Sam. What was that property used for up to this point?
To my knowledge, it's always been agricultural, either pasture or it might have been forested here over. But all my life, for 49 years, been pasture.
Thank you. Mr. Greg Long?
I'm good.
Sure.
Yes.
Was there any other questions for Sam? So, Sam, again, what's your position, what's your bottom-line position on this applicant here?
Representing the church, we're not in favor of having that type of a venue behind the church, that type property use, because we don't feel like we can adequately support the people that could be, and especially knowing now that there's going to be another 3,000 square foot structure to, you know, potentially be put in as future use, where are they going to park all these people down there?
Sam, how far is, would the entrance be to this venue to the church parking lot?
They're sandwiched right beside each other. I mean, this is just a matter of maybe 60.
For maybe you...
For maybe you, there's just a little strip of grass between the parking lot.
Any other questions or...
Is there a second exit out of there with this many people if there should be an emergency? Is there another exit to come out other than this one at the church?
Not that I'm aware of. I did see that I would want to try to widen that area, and so, we have kind of one lane coming in and then one lane coming out, but not totally the road, the driveway, just in the entrance and at Philadelphia Road because it is narrow, like you said, and I would think it would be better for our business if we had a little bit more openness for coming in and out.
Well, at least on the pictures, the road or driveway, at least, once you turn into the driveway, it's only wide enough for one car. Is that accurate? So, when you explain what you want to do, the vision that you offered, to me, was not as clear as the vision I heard from the first applicant. So, help me again, what is your vision for what you're trying to do here?
Trying to do outdoor ways and then also include other events from showers or church functions, anything like that. I'm wanting to make sure my neighbors are also happy with this because I do know it is a concern for a lot of people and no matter where you go as a business. But, so my main thought process was basically doing wedding venues outdoor there at the barn. That seems to be a very popular setting now for weddings, and it just keeps on growing over the last 15 years. The reason why I'm doing an indoor barn is because of the air conditioning, and it also helps keep the noise level down. And so, it's not that it's adding any more people than what if I just left the pole barn, it's just adding more comfort and more beauty to the area.
Thank you. Ms. Peggy Smith? You've got three minutes.
I'm Peggy Smith. I am, my brother and I, we are the owners of the property. We've owned the property for about seven or eight years. We, I just wanted to say, just tell a little bit of the background of this property. When we bought the property, we've been great neighbors with the church. I feel like, you know, like we've, you know, it coexisted in a reasonable manner. When we bought the property, it was completely overgrown. We bought it during the downturn in real estate. It was, you couldn't even see the house. We bought it, paid about $364,000 for the whole property, and it needed a lot of work. So, we put in weekends and actually years of work to bring that property value up and cleared the land. And then, my sister moved away, and my brother grew up in Blue Ridge, I lived down in Swannie, and our kids grew up, and we no longer really can care for the property like that property needs. I mean, it's 27 acres, it takes a lot of maintenance. And so, we put a renter in there, and we rented out the past, the big 10-acre pasture. There were 5-acre pasture and a 10-acre pasture in addition to other areas. But I just wanted the idea that... So I'm just hoping that, you know, like, that I'm sure Ms. Paul Sway, you know, would probably have plans to widen that driveway and you could put parking all along the left side of the driveway and it is a, you know, like a long drive down to the barn. So I'm just putting it out there that I think the property value, we've really worked hard to raise the value of that property and, you know, we don't have a, you know, we don't really care what she does to the property, but it is, it is a beautiful piece of property and a lot of work has gone into it, so we hope that they can work that out, you know, and be good neighbors.
Any other comments or questions?
Audrey, it's, I thank you very much for looking to bring your business to the table. We certainly appreciate that. And it's, it's difficult to, to think that you can't foresee the future. You don't know what's going to happen, you know, change is inevitable. You just hope you can direct it toward the goal and vision that's there for the family and the resident. It makes it difficult on us sitting here when you have a coin has been flipped and it came down directly on its edge in public comment. And it's good that the property owner's here because that was one of my concerns, just, you know, being part of the owner, you know, you're limited on what you can put forth in resources to try to get site planning done and civil work done to estimate what you could possibly do in your, in your budget to make some of these changes happen before you actually know you're going to get this property. It leads back to what Richard said earlier, you know, you can't predict just because we make a decision here what's going to happen out there. Things may or may not happen. There's plenty of things that may prohibit this helping going through and their concerns are never going to be real. And if, if we don't try to, at the same time, listen to some of those comments and try to plan ahead and think of what steps could we take to put everybody at ease, I just, I don't know that we would be doing the right service, but I don't know how far it needs to get. You know, we can't sit here and start putting 50 million conditions on every single proposal. It'll just stifle anything whatsoever. But I feel like there should be, I do feel like based on the discussions tonight, there should be something at some point to say what other criteria can be put other than just 10 o'clock time stop at night, you know? It just seems like the perpetual at 9 o'clock the road of the sidewalks. Yeah, I'm glad for it, but is that the only thing we did know? There's plenty of other things that go into the lifestyle of the community and the values of the town. So I'm not sure what else needs to be included in this, but I just have a gut feeling there should be some, some other provision to bridge this gap here to see that, you know, progress is made without stifling change. I just don't know what that is. I'm not that smart.
I've got a problem with the traffic like the other one and I know for a fact that the little roads like that, the county can't do nothing with because there's no right of way and they, if they can't widen it, they can't pave it, they can't do nothing. So it's not going to get any better traffic wise.
You mean coming in and out of the property?
Yeah.
So by widening the front of the drive, drive, you don't think that would help with the entrance and exit?
We can't ask you to widen the road, but I know as far as the county's concerned, there's no right of way on most of these dirt roads that we've got left. If there was, it'd be a pavement. But Sam can tell you that we can't pave them because they got to have a 60-foot right of way and you can't widen them, so there's not going to be any improvement in that really.
Well, my concern is how to respect for 160 years that church has been there and I don't know how we can not respect that. Not that you would respect it, but...
I thought it would be my church home, but who knows?
Yeah. The, I just don't, I just think that there are too many unanswered questions here in my mind, so I will make a motion, a recommendation to deny the request.
Awesome.
We have a move in second to recommend to deny the request. Any discussion? All those in favor of recommending to deny the request, please raise your hand. This public hearing is closed. The next item on the agenda is board announce, comments of any questions or comments from the board? I'd like to thank everybody for coming out. We make better decisions when we have more input. Too many times we're here and there's not enough people, so thank you for coming, all of you.
As many of these we've had over the years similar to this, Ms., is it Carol or what? That's the only time I've heard that question being asked, what would happen in the future? That was a, that was a very good question, so.
I still think that we need some rules and regulations on venues because this is some guidance. It's just, it's difficult.
This has probably been a dozen, 15 of these in the last couple of years.
And they're all, and they're all difficult because you see both sides of these and you don't have to read anything and go through the recommend and not recommend. And in this case, the idea of a DJ across the road from the funeral or a revival is mighty a factor.
Well, I see your weddings are going to be in the evening hours. I don't think your funerals are, so, but it's just, you know.
Yeah, they have.
Have they? They were going to take this county.
Yeah. Again, had this been, you know, my, my biggest problem or concern, not problem, concern was that your driveway is from here to there to Philadelphia. If it were a quarter mile down the road, I'd probably, you know, I wouldn't have any concerns at all. But for, you had 200 people there, I could see somebody, somebody possibly using their parking lot to park a car and something happened to get in a car or they have an accident or whatever, that, that, again, that's my concern was being so close to the church.
Right. There were parking tenants for big parties, so I mean, we, our parking tenants would make sure that they park in our parking lot.
Any other board comments?
Well, I'll just make a comment. Please consider how you would like to handle the longevity of this and the future use. If you pick another piece of property, you have to reapply on this one if things change? And think about how you would like to have that as part of the application because for me, the proximity to 515 there and long-term growth of the dig and the church right next door, you know, it's survived 160 years. If you sell that property and somebody has a different vision of an event than you do that chooses that property because of its proximity to 515 and the growth of that way, they could very easily have a whole different aspect of looking at that. And if it transfers with them, then we're stuck.
Right.
With nothing, you know, it's, it's very difficult to take something away from somebody once you give it to them.
That's why I was like, I can see either way of that going, either way, you know, my girls were wanting to be part of that business.
And this, you know, from a personal standpoint, you know, I'm about as big a personal property rights advocate as, as there is, but I gotta leave that sometimes serving here, I gotta look at, I guess, the bigger picture, even though if it were up to me, I would say it's your property, do what you want to do as long as it doesn't interfere with somebody else's. But there's a little bit more big, bigger picture here involved, so. Again, you're, you're welcome in the future to lease a lot of that, you have to come up with a new plan or, or another piece of property. I encourage you to do so. Any other comments? Any public comments? The last item in the German?
To move.
Move, I hear a second.
Second.
Move in second, any discussion? All those in favor of the German, please raise your hand.
Harold, Harold, all right.